I'll call the Guthrie Planning Commission meeting to order for Thursday, July 14, 2016. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Powell.
Here.
Commissioner Chappell.
Here.
Commissioner Coffin, absent. Commissioner French.
Here.
Commissioner Ogden.
Here.
Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item two is public comments, and I would wait to address, if anyone wants to address the issues that we're discussing tonight. At that time, we'll let you come forward, rather than doing it now. I move to item three, approval of minutes for June 9, 2016. Do I hear a motion?
I move to be approved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. If we have a vote, please, Mr.
Motion to approve minutes from June 9, 2016. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion passed. Thank you very much.
Discussion on possible action on application 2016-20113746 concerning a request to rezone property adjacent to and including 501 South Division Street from R1, single-family residential, to C2, general commercial, to strictly C2, general commercial.
Chairman, I want to apologize. The public letter that went out, it did go out to property owners within 300 feet as accordance with state statute and everything. It did not specifically address what property was being rezoned because it is multiple properties as we see today. And so, it was a little bit vague. That was an internal error. I take full responsibility for that, and my sincerest apologies to the public on that mistake.
Does it affect anything in our thinking here?
It does not. It was still in accordance with everything that we have to do. It just resulted in a little bit of increased phone calls and questions to our office, which I personally took care of and apologized to each and every single one of them.
Cody, could you give us a staff report on what they're wanting to do?
Yeah. And representatives are here. Representatives, please stop me if I give misinformation, but the area that we are looking to rezone, the area that will be in the legal description in the ordinance, is actually multiple properties. It is three homes, is that correct? One home that is currently addressed right now, and it is also a commercial property. That's why it currently, the area has a mixed zoning right now because they are actually two distinct properties. The plans are for them to come back to you next month with a preliminary and final plat for recommendation and approval by the city council. But right now, we're looking to rezone what is a residential property and what is a commercial property into one complete cohesive zoning.
Do I assume from the picture that we have here that it is the old Carl Jr.'s and the home immediately to the south?
Yes.
Just one home.
Just one home to the immediate south. Which is showing kind of the parking lot area.
And so, obviously, the plan that you're seeing right now in your packet, for those of you at home, I believe it should be on the screen in just a moment. It's a completely new configuration of the site from what we have traditionally seen with that former Carl Jr. building along South Division.
Okay, I would ask anyone that had public comments, if they'd like to come forward, would ask you to come to the mic.
Where's Division? On that.
Division has to be on the top of that.
Division is to the right of the parking lot.
To the right of the parking lot.
Yes, towards the end of the page.
Over here.
Here, here.
We have a North Arrow on here, Cody. We're at North Arrow on this.
That was the old parking lot back there. Yeah, there was a parking lot back in here.
The label on the site, on the building itself, is actually facing north. You're reading it as northeast, southwest, to the right of your page.
Is east.
To the right of our page.
To the right is east.
Yes, to the right of the page is east.
Okay.
It is actually going to still remain 501 South Division from everything that we can tell, the address for the next building.
So that, okay. I am too. I thought Division was right there.
No, it's on the east end. Go over there.
So the house that they're taking is not on Division?
Up and down, up and down. Yes, that's Division.
Is the house on First Street, guys? Absolutely. Please join us at the mic.
We need a little help here on this.
Well, where's Carl's, where's Carl's Jr.?
The Carl's Jr.'s.
Okay, that's what's confusing. That's what's confusing.
This is Division, right?
Yeah, okay.
So the building is actually back.
And so, there's a house.
Yeah.
Let's get to one conversation.
Just one?
Let's, let's, sorry. Yeah.
They're just pointing directions.
We have, we have a lot of.
Mic, please. Thank you.
Opportunity for everyone to listen at home, and we want to make sure that we have one conversation going.
Okay. Yeah, so, if you're upright on your page, the, the north is actually Perkins. Perkins is to the north of the property. First is to the west, and Division is to the east. So, right now, the house is underneath the store, where the store will be, and the parking lot is currently where Carl's Jr. is today.
And so, the houses that are not going to be here any longer are located on First. Yes.
Okay. And you're saying that's one house, roughly under where the facility is shown?
Correct, yes.
The new facility.
And I imagine in this parking lot, these, these are little landscape islands?
Correct.
That's the plan? And then, along Division as well?
Yes.
Couple of little, yeah, okay.
And did I hear we will be seeing some full plans on these?
Yes, the plan is for next month.
This is just for zoning.
This is just for zoning.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to recommend approval for this zoning change.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Can we have a vote, please? Mr. Mosley?
Yes, all in favor to approve rezoning, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you very much.
Item five is discussion on possible action on application 2016-20113745 concerning a request for special use permit property located at 829 East Triplet Road for dirt bike ATV off-road usage.
During the last city council meeting in June, to give a little bit of background on that, we did not host our scheduled July 5 meeting due to the holiday, to the timeline of the holiday. So, we have not met since the third Monday in June. The city council decided to allow for off-road dirt bikes, ATVs, to be applied for as a commercial use through a special use permit. They can only be allowed in C2 areas. Or in commercial areas. Let me apologize.
On our April 14 meeting of 216, where minutes indicate that we discussed this.
Correct.
Situation as a possible zoning change, and that was denied at that time, correct?
I want to be careful on the zoning change. Yes, we will be making a change to the zoning ordinance by implementing a new use. Right now, this is not, correct.
I have a discussion at that time, and I'm noting in the minutes that that was all denied at that time.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Would you like to public comment on this?
We do have several members signed up.
Would you like to come to the mic, please, and tell us your name, please?
And I believe the applicant is here as well.
Okay.
I blew up the.
If you want to hand these, if you want to hand these to us, and then go to the microphone to speak to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sticking together there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you state your name for us?
Yes, my name is Karen Shandorff. I own the property at 1123, which on the little map that I presented to you all, my property is highlighted in kind of the green color. The situation that we are addressing is immediately to the west of my property line I guess my main questions are, why would someone want to locate a track like this behind or beside of other people's properties? When there are other acres available next to the people that are wanting to do this, why would they not want to put it around their own home, instead of, quote, "in somebody else's backyard"? And why, when they started doing this, did they not bother to consider that the noise from all the dirt bikes, the dirt flying in the air, the trash, would affect us? The noise really doesn't have any kind of boundary lines as far as whether it's on the south side of Triplet Road, used to be known as Roller Coaster Road, or on the north side. It just keeps traveling. It doesn't stop. It also will affect the people on the east side of Interstate 35, as well as on Division. Why would we, as neighbors, not have the right to enjoy our land and quality of life, instead of having to listen to the noise all the time of the revving up of the dirt My opinion is that this situation should not be allowed, no matter the zoning, in a residential area. Also, I have spoke with some realtors, and they said that if something like this were to be allowed, that our property values would go down in the future. And we probably would have a real tough time in ever trying to resell our property if we chose to do so. One of my questions, too, is about three years ago, we appeared down here, the Freemans, which used to own the property just to my immediate west, and we kind of thought that this situation was taken care of, but it wasn't evidently. There's been meets back there a few times. Sometimes it gets so noisy, yes, I do not live on the property at the current time. I've had plans to build my own home there for a number of years, but I've kind of put it on hold to see how this is going to end up being, whether it's going to be allowed or disallowed to take place.
Ms. Shandorff, pardon me for interrupting, but you have one more minute for public comment.
Okay, thank you. So, I guess we would really like to kind of put out the idea, who in the world would like to have something like this in their own backyard, so to say? Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, members of the Planning Commission and members of our audience, the Planning Commission cannot respond to public comments, but can take them into consideration. So, there cannot be back and forth on the matter, but I'm sure that they consider all things. I believe we have two more individuals signed up, and again, the applicant is here. Mr. Butler? Okay.
Gentlemen, my name is Dwayne Butler. I actually live in the property right next door to Karen's. I do live in the house that is there. I've lived there since the end of April, is when I bought the property, and if I would have known prior to buying the property that something like this was going to be allowed, I would have never bought the property.
Excuse me, is your property just west of the property she was talking about?
Yes, yes. I am directly, I am right next door, yes. So, that track is directly behind my property. I'm actually sitting in my living room and hearing the bikes. With my TV on, I can hear, and it's just been a few bikes. I can just imagine what it would be like if I had 40, 50 more bikes out there. That's just one or two bikes running around out there that I hear while I'm sitting in my house, all the windows closed, the TV on, and I hear all the noise. Like I said, if I would have known prior to, I've never even received anything, no letters or anything else. The only way that I found out about this was from Karen, came over to my house a couple weeks ago and told me about this meeting. And while I've been sitting here this evening, I've heard that there's been prior meetings, months prior, April, May, June, there's been meetings about this, and this is the very first time I've ever heard. Otherwise, I would have been here prior to this. So, my recommendation is no with the, whatever the zoning is on this property or anything else. You know, I, I would never be able to sell my property, and I'm going to be stuck there. And I don't want to be stuck in my own property because I have a bunch of bikes running out behind me. I don't mind a bike or two. That's no big deal. You know, it's their property. If they want to run around with their kids or whatever on their bikes, that's fine. But to have a whole bunch more, and the wildlife and everything else that I have go through my property, that's going to start disappearing because the wildlife is going to be spooked by all the noise and everything else also. And I have a lot of wildlife. I have road runners, I have rabbits, I have owls, I have all sorts of things that are around my property. Every day, I see them, except when the bikes are running. So, that's all I have. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mosley, weren't all residents within 300 feet to have been notified?
Yeah, I, I'm not entirely sure why he didn't receive a letter. We received a list of property owners from the county. Every single property owner within 300 feet received a letter. I think that we mailed out 12 letters total.
Cody, do we do that every time we had a hearing, or was it just for the initial one?
Anytime a rezoning, a special use, or any kind of more stringent waiver kind of comes about, we do have to send out public notices. We also have to publish it in the Guthrie News Leader as well.
And I did send it in the news.
So, I don't understand why Mr. Butler did not receive one. That's a little bit concerning on my end. I'm not 100%. You said that you were in here in April, maybe it was still listed as the previous property owner on the county records, but I don't think that that was the case. I can't tell you why Mr. Butler didn't receive one.
And by the way, staff wise, of the 12 that were sent concerning this one, were there any, what was it?
We received three, either personal phone calls or personal visits, asking the Planning Commission to not support this.
Three of 12. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And we have another person signed up. I believe it's Mr. Sunday. Okay, Mr. Sunday?
I'm Alan Sunday. I live just to the east of John Vance Motors, down the valley, and it's just to the south of the Millers' property. You'll see a small, two-acre pond there, and then a larger pond, which belongs to the Millers.
Wow.
And that's where I.
He said the south of Vance would be right there, wouldn't it?
Yeah, there's Vance.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So.
You're, you're just, just to the east of Vance?
Yes.
And you have the small pond?
Yes.
And then, there's a larger pond on the.
A larger pond below, below the dam.
Got you located, thank you.
Okay, yep. Anyway, that's where I am. We've been here 17 years, love Guthrie, not going anywhere. So, we love where we're living. And I've known the, the family for, gosh, how old are you? 17 years, anyway. And they've had motorcycles going through there, through the, through the woods, on the other side of my pond, for quite a while. I have no problems with it. As a matter of fact, I can't hear it inside the house. They're going to be having these races once or twice, once or twice a month, possibly maybe two, maybe Saturday and Sunday, on one of those, one of those races. And I don't have a problem at all with it. So, I hope you can pass it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all you have signed up for this particular issue. You do have one more signed up for public comment in item number six. So, if you want to hear from the applicant, they are here, if you want to start discussion publicly.
Did they sign up to speak?
The applicants don't.
Huh?
The applicants don't.
Okay.
Because they're listed, they're listed on the agenda.
Okay. You ready for a motion?
I would entertain a motion.
Then I move to disapprove the special use permit.
Motion's been made to disapprove. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been mowed in second, and motion's been made in second, excuse me.
Before we take a roll, I just want to clarify, the Planning Commission makes recommendation to city council. The ruling tonight does not reflect the final ruling. A recommendation will be made onto the, the council agenda for next Tuesday. I placed it in the council folder myself earlier today. After this meeting, I will make, I will make edits to reflect the recommendation made by Planning Commission. You have a motion and a second to recommend a denial for this special application, for this special use application.
A tad of discussion on that, then if we may. I'd like to read for you here, the minutes of our, our previous one, and so that you understand our position. Back on, on April 14, the discussion was held regarding the addition of an ATV dirt bike use of Guthrie zoning code. Motion was made by one of us and seconded by the other to deny the addition of such a use of the Guthrie zoning code. All voted aye to deny dirt bike use inside city limits at that time. So, I, I think in all fairness, you should understand that we have, we have looked at this before, and I think you're seeing us fairly consistent with that. Thank you, I don't know.
Thank you, Commissioner. Could we have a vote, please, Mr. Mosley?
Again, motion to recommend denial for the special use permit application. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries.
Item six is discussion on possible action to amend design guidelines for accessory buildings.
Members of the board, I'd like to just address that Mr. David Wakefield would like to speak on this issue. Hey, Mr. Wakefield, if you'll join us at the podium.
My name's Dave Wakefield. I have applied for a building before. That's not so much what this is about. I'm a real estate appraiser, been appraising for 13 years. What I kept getting from information when I was hearing back and forth is that the metal buildings degrade the value of the properties, and we just have not seen that. More so, what we're seeing is Guthrie, and speaking to my peers, is the only one that's come out with in the acreage type additions, that they can't have a metal building that is made of a metal type building that you see everywhere. What this does is, it does affect property values. And the decisions that you make need, need to be clear for everybody in the appraisal world, because we have to take that into consideration. When a house has a metal shop building, say a 30-by-40 building, and a house next door doesn't have one and can't have one, to get a building the same size, he's going to have to spend about $30,000. So, that adjustment, that was about $15,000, is now 30, 25, $30,000. So, it does affect values. So, what, the decision on that needs to follow over to the assessor, so that they can modify their ABMs, because I get called every year to go and appraise houses for their property values, to adjust their property tax, because it's, they don't agree with the value, and this will affect it in a pretty significant manner. I know that you have on the list of something about allowing it in five acres or more residential type scenario in the Guthrie city area. That's, that doesn't represent a large population of people. And taking into consideration two-acre parcels, again, still doesn't, doesn't affect a significant amount to represent someone that lives on your typical one-acre, one-and-a-half-acre parcel. And please don't take this that I'm trying to get a shop out of this. This is, this is my job. The people that I talk to, the other appraisers I talk to, this is the only town that's doing this. Talking to the metal shop people that I had mine originally talked to, they've never heard of it either. And so, this is becoming an issue on those that do come up to the Guthrie Logan County area. We have to be clear on this, so that we know what to do, because we have to be able to prove our adjustments. And if the ruling stands, which that's your decision, to not allow metal buildings of any kind, now, we're not talking about your 7,000-square-foot lots. That's not a typical, shouldn't be there type thing, but an acreage, that it's atypical, because we would never try to use a 7,000-square-foot lot with a home and a shop that was built 40 years ago, because that's the only time they could do it, with something that was an acre, acre and a quarter, whatever it is, out in the southern end of Guthrie. That's where I keep pointing to, because it's more prevalent out there. But this is an issue that, there's been a lot of questions come up in our meetings about it, because there is at least six appraisers I know of that come up here. There's others, but I know of six. And they don't know what, what's going to happen. They don't know what to do. And so, they asked me to come up here, since I live up here, to try to find out what is the cause, and make sure you guys have the information you need, because what I kept hearing the last time is that it's degrading value, and I've never, ever seen a metal shop building degrade value. Now, the idea of having zoning and codes, we love that idea, to make sure that it is a respectable building, built by a respectable company, instead of the hodgepodge's that we see in the country, built with every imaginable color, the coat of many colors, metal building out there. But to say specifically, you can't have one, and we don't even have to call, because they have less than two acres of land, they can't have one, this one does, because it was built five years ago. The adjustments for those two are dramatic. So, it does, it does affect the tax value on that. So, whatever you do, if you wouldn't mind clearing that up for us, on whatever meeting that you're planning on doing, I think Cody's going to copy me on it, so we can upgrade those, or inform the people that need to do it, to adjust accordingly. But your assessor also needs to, because it's just going to cause trouble. If they don't adjust, it's going to affect tax values. That's really all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Wakefield.
Okay, thank you very much.
Members of the board, I'll draw your attention to the single piece of paper that I set next to your agendas before the meeting. I'm sorry that it copied in black and white instead of highlighted, but hopefully you can see the amendments to our design guidelines. This was brought to you last month. We didn't have as many people here as what we wanted to, and then Commissioner Ogden asked for one more clarification. And that clarification is what you see on the backside, directly above item number 12, and that is, property owners without buildings, whether approved by vote or by in exception, listed above, shall ensure structures complement the main residence. Mr. Ogden asked that that would be reiterated again in these design guidelines as an expectation by the Planning Commission and the City of Guthrie. So, I tried to make sure that that was included in our amendments, and as, and these all come from our workshop that we had in May.
Thank you, Cody. Mr. Ogden, do you have something?
And I thank you, Cody, for doing that. I might like to suggest a little bit more, for instance, on item A, where we've noted property measuring more than five acre, total acres considered to be rural in use, exceptions to the standards above. And perhaps we could, I'd like to maybe see a little better clarification that say, properties measuring more than five total acres, which may be considered, which may be. measuring more than five total acres, which may be considered, which may be, some of those areas might not be considered rural, I realize there's a little, little variance there, which may be considered, considered rural in use. And these requests should be considered on an individual basis. I, I think we can encounter some that there might be an argument, whether it's rural or not, and I'm just trying to cover a little bases there, rather than just flat making it five acres. Or is this gentleman made, made to note two acres or whatever we might decide on, although I certainly can understand his comments, too. That's just a suggestion.
I guess my opinion on that, it, it sounded like five acres was a number that if staff received a application or a property owner came in saying that they want this, if they had five acres or more, we could just approve them without having to go through any kind of Board of Adjustment ruling or anything like that. So, I, but we can also, if, if the rest of the board wants to see something like that edit included, you can also make that amendment in your motion tonight, or we can table again.
I don't know whether the rest of you would consider the fact that some might, but some are definitely rural, there's no question about it. I mean, you got forests all around them. Some others might not be considered that. I was just saying that this might give us a little bit of, a little bit of a reason to, to look at them on a, and weigh it on a, on an individual basis. Gentlemen, I don't know if anybody else feels that way.
Well, it sounds reasonable. I mean, after all, somebody wants to build a six, seven thousand square foot house and a big swimming pool on five acres, that really is not rural. The next guy comes in with, say, two thousand feet, and he's got a plant in the garden or, or got a cow out back or whatever, that could be considered rural. I can see where there'd be an exception now and then.
I would entertain a motion either way. I mean, if you all want to table it?
Do we want to table it for anymore? I mean, the gentleman brings up some good points here. Do we want to table this anymore to, to talk a little bit more of a...
Again, this is just simply how I understood your request from our May workshop. And that, with all respect, Mr. Ogden, I'm not trying to disagree with you, that wasn't addressed in the June meeting. That wasn't something that was asked to come back for revision or anything like that, so I didn't have it included.
Understand, as the workshop before...
Mr. Mosley, I agree, it should be on an individual basis, I think, you know, if we can write that in somehow.
Okay, we can also, we can always just include, after the quote, "five total acres", I can include the line, "which may be considered to be rural in use." We can make that motion with that amendment.
Yeah, okay.
And then additionally, when the narrative said, "these requests would be, will be considered," suggested, properties measuring more than five total acres, which may be considered to be rural in use. And then, these requests will be considered, as you suggested there, Mr. Chairman, on an individual basis. Because I think we still should have a little flexibility in checking these things out as an individual basis, it's not a blanket five acres, as you just pointed out.
I, the staff opinion on this would be that we're not actually changing anything in our design guidelines, then. You're still going to send them through Board of Adjustment, because it doesn't necessarily say that...
On an individual basis.
Yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't say that staff has the power to determine what's rural or not. I, I just, in my opinion, it doesn't reflect any kind of change in the design guidelines. It doesn't speed up the process for anyone with five acres or more.
I'm trying to speed it up, or we're just trying to clarify.
So, are we, say if they have three and a half acres, and it's considered rural, so we're not going to allow that?
Your, the way that it currently reads is that anything, two or more, should be granted favorable consideration from the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, I agree with that. Two or more sounds good to me.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mosley, should you rewrite that and hit us at the next meeting with it?
However you guys vote.
Or I would entertain a motion, if someone makes to make a motion.
Do I, were you the one that was writing it?
Well, again, I'm just, I know we, in our discussion, we talked about five acres. We were trying to arrive at something that would be flexible for those that had larger properties.
And, and I think that the flexibility term that you used is right, you know, directly related to my, speed up the process. I'm not trying to take any shortcuts or anything like that, but I think that it, what I meant, the intent of what I said was for the flexibility.
Well, I think we just, we're trying to be, we're trying to be fair to, to the folks that have larger, larger acreage, which can, could be considered to be rural. And we certainly do have some areas in, within the Guthrie city limits, as we have annexed in, that have, have brought in rural areas that would be considered rural in the, in the past, that, well, actually, were outside of city limits in the past. And these probably should have certainly some flexibility in, in our thinking, and, but I think we need to be fair to all of them.
I think the...
I recall that this gentleman here, if I'm not mistaken, you brought, you came to us a while back.
Correct.
I think about doing that, see? And you didn't happen to have a real large property, but as I recall it, and we're trying, we're trying to weigh that all, we're trying to weigh this all fairly, and...
Sir, public discussion's over.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, we're just, we're trying to make a decision, so I'm sorry, but, okay.
I...
I said, what's the rest, what's the rest of you feel?
I, I think that...
If this is clear enough to the rest of you, fine. I just, I just thought, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with refining a few things, I don't think, okay?
You're right, but the, the addition of, "these requests shall be considered on an individual basis," would mean that that five-acre owner would still need to go through that Board of Adjustment process, and still...
Why does he put the Board of Adjustment? Why, why didn't they still come to us?
Because you don't issue variances. You make recommendations. The Board of Adjustment is who issues variances.
Yep.
And the City Council, in, in certain regards. It, it just means that the, these requests would still be having to go through the Board of Adjustment process, and it would still, and that's what I mean by, there would be effectively zero change from how it's written today, was because they would still vote just as if, you're, you're basically saying, you can have them, but you still have to go through a voting process, which might result in you not being able to have them.
But to see, we can, we contradict ourselves by what, by what we've added here, that I had brought up, that property owners, blah, 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 shall ensure that the structures complement the, the main residence.
I don't see any contradiction whatsoever there.
Well, may I finish? Thank you. The accessory buildings, when it says outbuildings, accessory buildings must be of similar color to the main residence, and the material must complement the main residence. And then we go down on A and say, "exceptions to the standards listed above include." So, we are, we are making an exception to that upper portion that says, "they must be similar in color, and the material must complement," and then we've added it back here. So, we're kind of, we're kind of contradicting ourselves.
Well, that, that addition was requested last month.
Okay, and that probably should come out of there, too, because...
The, the addition that was requested last month?
Yeah, what I'm saying, because it contradicts the fact that we said, "exceptions to the standard listed above," we're giving them an exception to the standard of the fact that they were to, to complement the main structure. So, that probably shouldn't be in there, Cody.
Well, Commissioner Ogden, with all due respect, you asked for me to put it in there last month.
And I would say, it probably should come out, because we contradict each other. I mean, we contradict what, the fact we said, "exceptions to the standard listed above." What's the rest of the gang feel here? Do we want to make that a full exception or not?
Well, I feel like it's, it's still going to come to a vote, whether it's through the Board of Adjustments or the Planning Commission, anyway.
With the amendments that are made, correct.
Correct.
The way that it's written, would not.
And we can vary from that with our vote.
Five acres would not have to go to anybody, it would just be approved.
And that was the, that was staff's understanding of the intent from the Planning Commission workshop held in May.
And that was the consensus at the time. The exemptions to the standards listed above include exceptions. I don't know, I don't know if that changes anything, either. I mean, if it's five acres, is, is the exception to the standards listed above just on the outbuildings on number eleven?
Yes.
Can you see what I'm talking about, Cody?
Yes.
And that, "they must be of similar color." Well, if it's five acres, they don't have to be of similar color. It doesn't have to complement the main residence.
Staff was asked to add in something along the lines of, "property owners without buildings, whether approved by vote or by exception, listed above, shall ensure structures complement the main residence."
Which probably should come out of there now.
Last month.
Which probably should come out of there now, because that's...
I disagree with Mr. Ogden, I think they need to complement the residence. I, I don't think you want to...
I agree.
You don't want a pink metal building sitting beside a, you know...
I agree, but we're, we're showing it as an exception to the standards above, we're just, and if that, if that can stay in there that way, hey, I'm all for it, I, I, I...
If that isn't changing those standards, exemption to the standard listed above include, now, if you have this, then it wouldn't have to complement.
That is right.
Is that my understanding?
That's right, if you read it that way.
Mr. Mosley? What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is what's printed on the paper.
Oh, it's what's printed on the paper?
In accordance with what was requested in May and following in June.
Any other comments?
Chairman, we still need a motion and a second.
Anyone like to make a motion? Or table it?
I think we still got some kinks to work out, guys.
So, dies for lack of emotion.
I agree.
Mr. Mosley, I would say that it dies for lack of emotion.
Okay.
We'll move to item seven, request for future items of discussion. Commissioner Chapel?
I've got nothing right now.
Commissioner Ogden?
Nothing from here.
Mr. French?
Nothing here.
All right. Item eight, staff comments.
Nothing.
Mr. Mosley?
Nothing.
Thank you. Item nine, commissioner comments. Mr. Chapel?
I've got nothing.
I don't know who did the flags down noble, but I think they look really great.
You're welcome.
I thought you had a lot to do with that, but I think that is, they look really nice.
They look great.
Mr. Ogden?
Nope.
Commissioner French?
Have nothing, thank you.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
We are adjourned, thank you.